I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I don't see a third need to write. I'll look into it at this time. Seeing none, amendments to the agenda, council members? Hearing none, proceeding to the mayor's report. First question about the leak meetings coming up on October 10th, 11th, and 12th. That is still this weekend. Is there any interest from anybody?
It's not. We got back. Oh, very nice.
Okay.
Um, check to the yes.
Okay. You'll have, uh, when is that due?
Hold on, just a little spot. Uh, I'm not sure.
Soon, soon.
Yes.
You'll have a chance to think about it a little bit, but please get back to Jerry so that she can make arrangements that we need to do. Uh, thank you for those members of the car show. Looked like a great show over the weekend and get used to the part that's neat to see. Congratulations to Holly. I read the article in the paper about the weekend on campus sampler. Wonderful. What word for you and what work can you do for us and actually for the state and for a lot of people in that? We truly appreciate that very much. So, thank you. Also, for those of you who had a chance to read the leak journal, uh, there was, I started to pull back breaks of order in there. Uh, what's happening in Kansas. So, everybody saw that, you know, and, uh, and gave her thanks for all that. Had you where, if you may, please. Moving on to the minutes, I started the meetings. I take another of those going forward again. We'll have our third Monday will be our next council meeting. And look for the other, um, chances to join the government beyond that. If it's sent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved second.
Moved in second.
I would like to have a little bit of discussion on the EMS director. I'm just trying to let it out there.
I missed the second.
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Let's pull it, uh, we'll pull that from the consent agenda with the, um, if the first and the second will allow it to happen.
Yes, you bet.
We're gonna pull item E from the consent agenda. We do have a motion on the floor to approve A through D. All those, uh, I'm sorry, roll call, thank you.
Ellie?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Evo?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Item E, uh, the appointment of the EMS director. Tim, you want to stand up? Do you just record that?
I tentatively offered a position to Chris Matthews pending your approval, city council, to be the EMS director for the volunteer ambulance service. Uh, Chris is currently with the ambulance service as a training officer. He's also a volunteer fireman. A pastor at the Baptist church. His wife, three children, live here in town. Is that him? Is that him?
Ah, there we go.
Chris, do you want to say anything?
No, if you want me to, I will.
We're almost looking for words of wisdom, so.
Well, sir Chris, I mean, you're apprised of the situation and everything.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Well, that's just seems easy then.
Any questions, Tim? I have a motion to approve item E, appointment of the EMS director. Chris, can you?
So be it.
Second?
Approved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service for our community. I truly appreciate it. I think they have to go teach class now. Yeah, thank you. Item seven, planning zoning, none. Item eight, whole business. Small print, none. New business. Two thousand sixteen, city in Linsburg budget.
Is the motion to approve?
Question. Been moved in second to approve the budget. Discussion?
Uh, I was posed the question of anything we may be doing to assist with the, the area that was affected by flood of two thousand, what year was that?
Thirteen thirteen, slightly.
And I indicated there was one provision within the budget to do some work on that. And, uh, if I could just be reminded of the amount of that that we have included in this budget towards that project.
All that break address, I heard.
Thirty thousand dollars is budget for that project.
And that is flood control, engineering has been done currently, flood control base?
No, it's paid for this year in budget. The study was.
The study.
Yes. For the engineering, not the study, the engineering. Engineering and study. Correct.
But the estimate, that this is the estimate of new. Other questions about the two thousand sixteen budget?
The budget demonstrates an increase in miles of four, four point.
Oh, one.
Yeah.
Four point oh three eight.
Four point oh three eight.
And it's there to say that at least two miles are dedicated to, um, street improvement. Is that right?
Yes.
Larry might step up to the mic. He takes his question directly to the, you know, very well prepared for something.
Of the four buildings, there's about three of these streets and one mill is for a, they increase in tolling rates.
Other questions?
I know it says that in here, Larry, but just for refresher, we don't have time to get that. Gives a total property tax of bills.
The budget is for the taxes of the final building will be adjusted based upon the final county valuation side. Okay, so it could increase or decrease based upon final valuation.
Right. Then the amount in here though, projected today based on valuations, forty one.
Based upon. Forty three, six, one, two.
Thank you. Other questions? Otherwise, roll call, roll call, please.
Becky?
Yes.
Evo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Here's business, item E. I'd like to have one small comment at the end, and that is, I've said before, this is a heck of a, of a document put together and I want to compliment all of the staff who has inputted with this, which I imagine is every, but it's really well done. I would agree. Thank you. Item E, uniform, I'm sorry, ordinance number forty nine thirty. What do you desire?
Think much we approve?
Second. Moved in second. Discussion about the uniform, about the UPOC. Draw some.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Hey, this is just something that we traditionally do that every year to, just to kind of get our code in line with the state. Is that right?
Right. All the changes that are made at the state level are put into the UPOC and the STO. Okay, stay in there. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Evo?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Underneath business, item C, ordinance number forty nine thirty one, standard traffic ordinance, STO. Is your preferred by Tim? What was your desire?
I wish to approve ordinance number forty nine thirty one.
Second. Moved in second. Discussion. Questions, Tim?
Are there significant changes that, um, the public can like advise of or council's consideration?
I think in traffic, not so much. Um, I mean, the latest changes are the consumer carry and, uh, some of the liquor laws, we're going to train the swoop on. Not too much in the traffic category.
Stop signs, still a stop sign. Any stop before or, no, that's all.
And in attempted driving might be with texting on the prison. Is that what that references in section four?
In attempted driving is, um, should be. Other questions to the chief? Thank you, chief. Roll call, please.
Becky?
Yes.
Evo?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Move on to new business, item E, resolution number zero four dash one five.
Will we skip that deal?
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to move this along, please? This is item E, downtown infrastructure project. Changes as noted in your report there. What do you desire?
Wish to approve or discussion?
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion, please.
We're paying eighty percent, I mean, twenty percent after this? That is correct. Okay. As, I know you all recall, we have an issue with the foundations for the light poles on the downtown project. Caused a delay in the addition of, of inspection services as part of the project. And the way it's done is it's cost plus, we have a breakdown in front of you for the, for the cost plus eternal, eternal. The total cost estimate plus the net fee is thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety seven dollars and twenty seven cents. And as the city of Linsburg, our requirement is twenty percent, which is two thousand, six hundred and seventy nine dollars and forty five cents.
Is that paid to the state?
Uh, it's paid to the state, yes.
And this is a direct result of Kirk and Michael then not doing, um, thorough, um, engineering study of the selected light poles, the foundation in the concrete and everything that had been done.
Well, I think, yes, definitely playing factor in the additional days. One of the things is the contract is with the state of Kansas. And as that contract that we entered into as the city of Linsburg, the state becomes our agent and they've agreed. As such, we agreed to what their decisions are, um, and they agreed under their policies and procedures to approve the, which essentially we give them the authority to create or to have.
And is the July twenty first memo, um, to my valence, your project engineering services application from Susan Eisen, is that actually a request for reconsideration of that decision?
Well, it was reconsidered before. You have to go back to the very first email. There were incorrect dates submitted. Um, and those were corrected into the, that original email. Went back to the process again. That's why it says this is now correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Jerry, you were the, you made the motion.
Uh, Betty made the motion and Rick made the second.
Are we okay adding in the line, which is two thousand, six hundred and seventy nine, forty five payments in state?
Absolutely.
Second.
Yeah.
Does that change? All those in favor, vote in Jerry.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Evo?
Yes.
Becky?
Now we're ready for item E and new business. Resolution zero four one five.
Think much we adopt?
Second.
Resolution number zero four one five. Marking.
I'm asking, Greg.
We prefer not to adopt these games. We'd rather have this discussion item today.
I'll take you straight.
Okay, I was all for it. Uh, this is an introduction to a resolution that establishes.
Before you start, Billy, we need to rescind the motion for this, we need for discussion.
Well, that's up to the person who made the motion.
Yes, I will.
I would send off.
Thank you.
We're establishing a policy for housing incentive. And the primary reason for doing this, um, is to secure approval from the state department of commerce for the future of our HID, which is a rural housing incentive district. By, by creating a housing incentive policy, we demonstrate that we have a plan and that it's fair, predictable, and that it's positive and commerce likes it. They like to see, uh, a city, uh, coming up with a policy right now. I introduce it because, uh, for discussion, because I've limited the incentives in the program to the RHID. We discussed that before. Neighborhood revitalization, which is something that we have in effect right now on the Aris pole corridor. Uh, I mentioned, um, selling city owned property, that market value. And that's really about it. We could add other incentives, but we're limiting our initial policy to those three items. Uh, other reasons for having a written policy is that this enables us to market our policy. Because it shows that we have willingness to work through the challenges of, of creating new houses. Uh, you know, set down a route that we thought about. Thirdly, I think it's important that we do this. Uh, I think we need to be thoughtful about how we can afford the housing development in our community. It's been a while since we've done it. It's thirteen years since we had a submitted plan for subdivision, and that was a small one. If you go back to the one before that, Emerald Lake, uh, that's almost twenty years ago. So we have done this for a long time. And the market has certainly changed and the environment probably has changed too. Uh, we also need to be respectful of the character of our community and, uh, and at the same time, uh, we want to be fair and encouraging to a future generation of, of community builders. But we need to be smart public developers. We need to be aware of the work changes and the housing needs and trends and how we fit in a regional mix between the person and the lineup. I don't think we want to become a workforce hub for all of the industry that we have in the area. But at the same time, we want to be able to provide the housing that people want when they want to go to the industry. So, are there any questions on this resolution? And really what I'd like to know is, do we have other things we want to throw into this policy? Ideas?
This is something we've actually looked at and discussed before and then kind of set it aside and just had to put it into revitalization. Revitalization, is that right?
I'd say that, uh, we, we started narrowing down our focus at the beginning of the year with some area pictures. And we, uh, we are still in the process of building the residential development plan. But we've moved through that and we already are negotiating with a couple of developers to start work on a, a, a harder housing network. Uh, marketing was another concern at all.
Just help you with them also.
Yes. We have both developers we're talking to and I believe others who will want that RHID, uh, in place. And just quickly, the RHID will take tax, incremental tax revenue and put it back into the infrastructure. So that the developer doesn't have to float a special palm and have special assessments and they're facing an additional cost. Through an RHID, we are able to, uh, draw on money, uh, revenue from accounting and support to pay for infrastructure here in Linsburg. I've got kind of a question on wording of this, maybe standard language, I don't know. But, uh, in the prohibited incentives, uh, raids incentives which do not fill the following standards will not be considered. And I'm just curious as to why each of those lead with assure taxpayers that. This is a lot of periods, it's a little clunky the way there's a double negative in there too. But we're, we're actually saying that, that we want to assure that we're not financing a viable project. In reverse, that we're not, that we're not, that we're, we don't want to finance a viable project. I'm sorry, I didn't like to, oh, I, it's, it's, I don't think I get it wrong. The way I read that, I just leave you assured taxpayers that. And it's just, well, the standard is not to be considered would be that the city is not, does not finance already viable project. And that's on both of those two blocks. I think part of why I say that is a bit of a, a policy or a political statement to the community of ours for those that are property taxpayers that, to help them. I guess lack of words, it's still my money now, sure, but ensure them that. I understand what they're trying to do. The way you read that, it, it looks like the, the prohibited incentive would be to assure taxpayers in that.
So, understanding that this is for, uh, discussion and not necessarily approval this evening, um, even as we started out with, um, the first incentive to maintain a single point of contact for developers, um, how far away are we from that now? Is that what we're doing now?
We are there now. We just don't have a written down and we can't exactly advertise that. Um, you know, I can certainly sit in a room with a developer and talk about how I'll need to walk, funnel through my office. And that will alleviate some of the clunkiness that happens with developing products. But I'd really like to have a written down and adopted by the governing body when I'm out, um, passing out literature. Or, you know, I'd like to.
So how far away are we from getting all of those incentives? All five?
And RHID will go through department of commerce. Uh, we expect to finish housing assessment tool report this month. But it, it still takes a project to submit to, um, to, to the department of commerce for proof. And that takes a developer willing to enter into a development agreement with the city.
So we kind of have the force in front of the cross here.
Yeah. We're lining up ducks, is what we're doing. Would you just, just kind of go through the process of, um, one, for the RHID, the approval, the administrative process that has to happen, not only here but through the state, and then also up the housing assessment tool. And is it what it will enable us to, or a developer to use as an incentive? Well, I'll try. It's kind of complicated. Uh, we'll, we'll complete our housing assessment tool and it will tell us how many homes are needed to satisfy our growing population. That's a pretty easy target to, I mean, you can't do much to alter that number. Uh, Linsburg does have some strong command. We've seen a number of housing assessment reports, analysis on Linsburg in the last three years that we can draw from, from that, in that regard. That housing assessment tool though is packaged with a development agreement that a, uh, that a particular developer has put together, the city has assigned onto it. A piece of ground has been identified due to all cost of this, that a, a pretty lengthy feasibility analysis has to be run, usually by a developer, on that piece of ground and the infrastructure to, to verify that, that incremental taxing revenue is going to pay for it within a year. And you got to show that it's going to sense it or going to submit it and it goes to the department of, if approved, uh, there it is. We've been advised to carve off, to think big, to map out an area bigger than we expect to use initially. And that, that was something that we learned in the last few weeks. Advice from the developer? Yes. In other communities, that's how it's done. And I know in the person, it's through the RHID where there are two developers in the area. Site selection is, is still kind of critical. We narrowed it down before. Uh, the developer that we talked to a couple of weeks ago is reviewing those four options. Uh, we have our favorites and I'm sure he has his favorites. We'll have to come together to see how that's going. But that's big, that's big problem. You gotta have a developer and you gotta have a site before you submit. We expect to see this particular developer use the RHID to qualify for a tax credit on the product. Which will happen early next year.
What do you need from us at this time, Gary?
Um, Cory gave me a correction or at least a, a, uh, something to clean up a little bit. I'd like to re-submit this at the next meeting and have it adopted. This question would be, is this policy too broad? Is it too narrow? Yeah.
Who's this adopted from that's already working somewhere else?
It's a combination of, of efforts in Garden City and Dodge City. And they were identical in some ways, and they diverged and they had a different situation. We certainly, um, have focused more on single family, multifamily rather than loading down load moderate ones. We included simply by saying, but we are not specifically addressing a need for load moderates. You know, I, I feel very, uh, insecure about trying to say that this is too narrow or too broad without a whole lot more background, which I don't have. You do, you guys, and we can't do much here except go by what your feelings are. I, I do think it will be valuable to, when we're, in marketing, our, our desire to build housing supplement.
I guess some of this is probably, is this all kind of transpired during committee, during our procedures. We're trying to get use of tools to help better market it and sell this. And this was one of the things that you said would be an incentive that would help. And you've kind of developed it as your own tool to use. We haven't had a ton of say other than yes, we supported it and wanted, you know, we want developers and we felt this was the best action.
Right.
Barry and I do have to say, you know, I'm dealing with developers because I'm here to help with the single one, so.
But I'll go back to the, the primary reason is to get the, at least to get half word right off, or to improve off of the, uh, part of the. Misles. Secretary of Drivers. In reality.
In reality though, would we ever have a developer come in with a already viable project if they knew they had these incentives in place?
I think you asked something about the same thing.
Yes.
Would we have more viable projects being dropped through our lap? But it doesn't seem we have. But I think still you, you look at a project and you make, you do your due diligence. I really do believe in that assuring taxpayers that you're not financing something that you want, so that's important to me too as a taxpayer.
So is.
I was just going to say, we are, in reality, I just can't imagine we'd have a developer come in with a viable project. Yeah, because they're going to, I'm sorry, because they're going to look at the project, they're going to look at, not as a whole company, they're going to look at a specific project and pencil, try to pencil that out and with the cost of infrastructure in today's world and being able to work with lots with an RHID, the incremental tax will be paid for the infrastructure cost so you'll be able to market the lots or not just the lots, but the properties themselves if the, if the housing is constructed on it because it'll be less costly for that home buyer or renter because they will have to be covering property tax and the specials on top of that.
So do I, so do I understand that this isn't necessarily something we want to have just to have in our, in our box of tricks to offer a developer, but rather something that we will use as a marketing tool to attract developers, is that right? So it's, it's one thing to adopt a resolution with a rural housing incentive.
For each of you.
Yeah, thanks. But it's quite another thing to actually use that as a tool to bring developers to us, not just wait for them to come to us, is that right? And we have some kind of plan to get out to the market that then, or is that still in the works around the curricula?
No, it's in the works and this is part of that process.
Okay, but I mean, getting, actually getting out there, actually distributing the information, putting it out there so people are aware that it's there, how does that happen?
Technology conferences, local meetings, traffic.
Well, you already have somebody that's interested in this project.
Two different projects.
Yeah, we already got it for, yeah, so we already got marketed so it's speed to at least a few people, it's just it needs to happen to get, make them pencil it out where the project can be profitable.
Has this ever been a, the same thing in discussions with developers for the last three, four years, we have this in place?
You know, honestly, there have been a lot of discussions with developers.
There was a man in Wichita that you were really excited about.
Yes.
He went to, what's his name again?
Jason Mansickle has a number of projects going on in his communities throughout Kansas right now. He's not doing any additional development.
So he is no longer interested in this?
He's not currently a player. He had really the same, I think, city, personally, the same interest that he did because he's not building a career. My life, Jason provided an awful lot of information to an awful lot of cities. Kind of got us all interested in being able to track demographics and other marketing and I think it got us quite a bit. You can only do so much, you only have so much time to do that. And that's working in larger communities, honestly, building bigger projects because if you're going to have brain damage from a project, it might as well be a big one. It's still the same, never again, the concern and the risk of the small for large. And I still like Jason a lot, but he's, he's been pretty quiet for the last year and a year and a half.
Hmm.
Yeah.
He may go to run down on the housing incentive committee, I mean, how that would be formed.
I just think it's important that we show some buy-in from our partners, which is the school district and the county, that they at least are there to see these projects come and have others to say, I think it's important. When I came across that section in both Dodge City and Garden City, I thought it was a good idea. And there are, of course, they have a grand district and I think there's another, what was that governmental tax body that they have to bring in to the table because those , those same amount of taxes are going to a specific project. No, I think it's a good idea.
So I guess, give me a better description of what their function will be, I mean, as a committee, they'll be looking at these, those projects and then submitting as a committee to us.
I think there's a chance for you to have, to have to say, to have a piece of, at least the initial conversation with the developer. I don't see that they, you know, I don't, I don't see the authority granted to guide negotiations on state of the home, but they are capital prize of the process and they do have a voice ultimately.
You say this. Well, as a committee, I mean, if there's three or four people in these different entities or one from each of these entities and then let's just say there's two of them, the county and UST four hundred, their representatives go, yeah, I like it, I like anything about it. They don't vote on it, I mean, that's their opinion, but it still comes to us for upon decision. It's for us to review the whole project and for us to say, yeah, or no.
But, Rick, if they don't like it, I would, I would want to believe they have reason. Sure, it sounds like there ought to be some ears listening to the reason.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And that's the rule issue.
Right. Further discussion? Gary, take this back and you'll see the same resolution on our next meeting for adoption. Thank you, Gary. If anybody has further ideas now or things you want to discuss, we can give you information if you're. Item ten, there's no executive session. Item eleven, moving toward adjournment. What do you desire? Oh, that aside, adjournment. Moving second, the adjournment bill doesn't favor, say hi.
Hi.
Close, same time. And thank you all.